Hi there. I'm speaking tonight to, I'm speaking tonight to urge you to reject the effort to declare a climate emergency in Hadley. I'm hoping that we can put our feelings about climate change aside briefly and focus on the issues of good governance, due process, transparency, and allowing the people to have a voice because this provision fails badly on those terms. There's one thing we've learned over the last 20 years, especially in the last three years, is that when government declares an emergency, the people lose power. You know that there's still an ongoing emergency due to 9/11? What about 20 years later? There's still a COVID emergency more than three years going on now? My point is that when we give up our civil rights, the government does not like to give them back willingly. In this case, by declaring the emergency, the Climate Change Committee is setting itself up to bypass the people, to bypass town meeting, to bypass the Select Board, and enact transformational policies. In the Gazette, I noticed that Marion Parker suggested that this was non-binding. I've read the declaration. It's very detailed. It sets out specific goals such as modifying every building in Hadley and eliminating greenhouse gases from agricultural and other local businesses and settings. Think about what that would mean to our dairy farms, for any of our farms. It sets out action points. It commits town officials to following through, seeking funding. This is not a feel-good declaration for the environment. It's simply not a petition like that. It's a document that would transform Hadley. And I'm concerned that no one has even read it, and it won't be debated due to this emergency declaration. I don't think that this has been publicly posted. I know it's attached to Board docs for the Select Board meeting, but I don't think it's posted anywhere. Who's read it? Who goes to Board docs to check the document? So that's a big concern because this is extremely detailed, extremely transformational, and it's fine to debate this. I don't mind talking about these issues, but it needs to be done publicly, not under the guise of an emergency because that sets us up to shut people down, to censor people. Can't have views because we have to move quickly, and that's just wrong. We need to do this the correct way. This Select Board has championed transparency. If you really mean that, there's no way you can support this. It is extremely detailed. This is something that should be debated in a very detailed open forum, not just passed because we want to do something good for the environment. So I hope sincerely that you look at this and reject it. I hope that the Climate Change Committee thinks this through and takes this back because we need to do this the right way. Let's get back to democracy and debating these ideas. Thank you.
Next is Lynn Latham. Lynn?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Latham, and I live on Highland Circle. And I wanted to ask what the most effective way is to be in touch with Select Board members? And the reason is I sent, I have sent two emails to different individuals in the last month, and there has not been action or an acknowledgement of either of them. And so I am wondering what the best way is to communicate with you. And I used the @HadleyMA emails that are posted on the website.
Did I ask which of you emailed? Which of us?
I emailed the Chair and I emailed the Library Liaison on June 3rd and on July 8th. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Look into that. All right.
I think tell her that email is should be the best way to get us.
Email is the best way to reach us, and I will certainly look back at my emails and see what happened since I'm the Chair. And if there are firsts with their hand raised, it's Michelle Morris for you. Michelle?
Yes, I wanted to talk to two things. Very briefly, the first thing I wanted to speak to was I'd like to hear about what's happening with the Valley Bikes. I wrote a letter to the Select Board about it because I think I want to encourage the Select Board to approve joining the Valley Bike Program. The second thing I would like to speak to, very briefly, is the climate emergency thing. And since Marion is here, she can speak to it. I believe the thing was, I haven't read all the way through it, but I believe that it is subject to your approval to submit to town meeting. Is that correct? For approval? Or is it something for the Select Board to just approve or not approve without town meeting input?
I believe it's just for the Select Board to approve.
But it's just for, yeah. Well, one thing I would like to say in favor of the climate emergency thing, we are in an emergency, and it's not going to get any better in the foreseeable future. And previous speaker alluded to farms and all the pressures. The farmers right now are feeling all the pressures of climate change. And the more that we can do on a town level, town by town, the more this problem can get fixed. Because as we know, federal government, the Congress and the Senate are deadlocked, and they're not able really to pass anything at this point. So it's up to towns and states and smaller governmental agencies to do what they can.
Thank you, Michelle, and I will say Valley Bike is on next week's agenda.
Okay.
You're welcome. All right. Are there any other comments?
No one else has their hand raised. That is everyone.
All right, then let's move on to the consent agenda. We have warrant AB 2252, AB 2252S, AP 2253, AP 2253S, AP 2254, AP 2254S, AP 2300, AP 2301, AP 2301B, AP 2302, AP 2302S, PR 2227, PR 2300, the Common Victuaries License for Friendlies, the Committee for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Reservation for Margaret Mestragno, and the Hadley Police Department Reservation from Joel Pupien.
Still moved.
Motion by Joyce. Second. Second by Randy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes. And I'd just like to thank Margaret for her service on the DEI Committee, and also thank Joel Pupien for all of the good service he did for the town.
All right. Police Department, dispatcher's appointment. Is that you?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Police Department comes before you for your consideration on the hiring of two part-time dispatchers. The first is Elijah Edwards III. He comes to us as a fully trained and certified dispatcher, emergency telecommunicator. He started his career working customer service in a fast-paced call center for TD Bank. He was then employed by Waste Management Recycling where he began as a customer service representative, and then over the next six years, his responsibilities expanded to include research and resolution and quality assurance. In 2019, he became a 911 dispatcher for the city of Springfield, where he excelled enough to be chosen to work police radio during major incidents, where he remains a Pardia employee. Elijah has also recently gone through the training to become a full-time dispatcher for the city of Northampton, and we are thrilled to bring, we're thrilled for him to bring his skill and experience to Hadley as a Pardia dispatcher. The second is Rachel Farren. She also comes to us as a trained and certified 911 dispatcher. She has approximately two years of experience where she worked for the Berkshire County Sheriff's Department, the town of Dalton, and the city of North Adams. She also has experience working in the fast-paced and high-pressure food service industry. Rachel's supervisors from both Dalton and North Adams have provided her with letters of recommendation that detail her poise dealing with difficult callers and her ability to remain calm under pressure. We are looking forward to Rachel becoming part of the team as a Pardia dispatcher.
Make a motion to appoint Elijah Edmonds and Rachel Farren as part-time dispatchers.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Randy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes. Thank you. I think the food service industry experience may be more frightening than... So I'm sure she's...
Very possible.
All right. Police Department, again, Animal Control Officer, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are looking to add a second Animal Control Officer. The Animal Control Officer is an on-call position, is not regularly scheduled hours. And as of the current time, Kyle Dragon, our current ACO, doesn't have a lot of time to give to the town of Hadley. He's currently a full-time ACO for Franklin County. And so I was actively seeking out a local Animal Control Officer to help fill the role. So with that said, Don Uglacker, who currently resides in the town of Pelham, she's a full-time dispatcher, sorry, a full-time ACO for the city of Northampton. And prior to working for the city of Northampton, she was an Animal Control Officer in Anchorage and in Nome, Alaska. And she also has experience as an executive assistant for the Nome Police Department. So we're bringing her on as a consistent to our other ACO's availability dimension. So Don will be trying out this role for the next several months to see if she can balance both her full-time employment as well as the responsibilities that accompany this role.
Will that give us enough coverage?
I'm sorry?
Will that give us enough coverage? It sounds like we've got two part-timers that have very limited opportunities to be available.
We do. The call volume that we have for Animal Control, it's, we don't believe it's to a point where we need a regular part-time person yet, but that may very well change in the future. Thank you.
Motion to have her on as the Animal Control Officer, part-time.
Second.
You had a question.
I was just, I mean, didn't you do that at one point?
I did. I was, I was the ACO from 2008 to 2015.
So you can fill in when needed.
I can fill in, and I do as needed, yes.
That's what I was getting to, Randy.
All right, we have a motion by Joyce and a second by Amy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yeah.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The Department of Public Works, surplus property, 2013 John Deere mower with a blown motor.
2003.
2003.
Not apologies.
2003, okay. 1988 International Tanker Truck. It's been parked because it's so rusted and has not been registered to 2016. And the Swenson Sander, too small for the DPW to use. Do you hear Scott?
Yes. I'm not sure what you guys have for questions.
Nothing.
I make a motion to declare the following items from the DPW, the surplus property, 2003 John Deere mower, 1988 International Tanker Truck, and the Swenson Sander.
Second.
I got a motion by Molly, a second by Randy. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, and thank you for all the good work you do.
Thank you.
All right. Open the warrant for special town meeting. The proposed timeline is to open the warrant tonight.
So moved.
Second.
So the rest of that sentence is you will close the warrant on August 5th. Then you were in CPA articles due on September 1st. Select Board of Finance Committee Bureau warrant on September 7th. Finance Committee CPA Capital Planning Recommendations are complete. Warrants are sent to Town Council on September 14th. And actual town meeting will be October 21st with the public forum. We received that on the 21st.
27th for the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Jane, if I can just add, these dates are not definite. They often change, and I have not had time to get some more specifics from CPA with their deadlines off. So these are really just guidelines. I just need you to open up the warrant.
And we have a motion to open the warrant by Joyce. Second.
When do we, can I, I just have one quick question. Carolyn, do you have any idea when we might know when free cash will be available? Is that usually the end of August?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure it's that early. Dan has a better idea of that, but we try to schedule this. We can't have special town meeting about it certified, so we are optimistic it'll be before that.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote, Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changelou?
You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you, Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Green Communities update, Jack, from the Climate Change Committee. You there, Jack?
Yeah, I sure am. All right, hi. All right, so Jennifer, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes, you do.
Okay, excellent. All right. Hi, everybody. So I'm sharing an update on green community and where we're at. There's 280 out of 351 towns and cities and towns in Massachusetts that are officially declared green by the Mass Departments of Energy Resources. We are one of the few towns in Hampshire County that aren't declared green by the state, and unfortunately, that costs us when it comes to applying for some grants toward future energy projects. And right now, it's impacting us because we have not received our designation fee. There are five criteria that we need to meet, and we're making good progress on those. Okay, let's see. Jennifer is saying I cannot share my screen.
Can you just read that back?
Sure, I can go that route, Joyce. So, yep. All right, and I'll try again. Hang on. Yep. So here we go. Criteria one and two have to do with right of zoning for generation manufacturing R and D, and criteria number two has to do with expedited permitting. We have a letter in from the town lawyer, and both of those we are set on. Criteria three has to do with energy use baseline. They want us to aspire to save energy over time on how much we're putting in as a town. The goal is 20%. Very few communities reach.
Jack, I muted you because you need to choose the window that you're actually sharing. All we can see is your Microsoft Start screen. Alan, mute you now.
I can see what he is showing.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
And two, Jennifer.
Yep, okay. So the energy use baseline, this is one that we're working on this summer. We are having some help from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and also some help from the Director of Western Mass Green Communities, who's helping us write this up. Number four we still have as an open item, that's the Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy, and that has to do with putting this forth between the schools and the town and making sure that long-term we're complying with their fuel-efficient vehicles. And number five, we passed a town meeting. That's the more modern stretch code. So our building policy is up to date. So we've done three, we've done three out of five. These last two we're going to be working on for the summer. Once we are declared a green community, the town receives $130,000 as a designation fee. And that money can be used toward all sorts of different things. We'll find out more details from the folks involved at the highest levels of green community on exactly what we can do with that. All right? So again, on July 19th, I'm actually doing some writing with Mark Rabinsky, who's in charge of this program, to work on criteria three. And I have heard that you folks are working on criteria four, the Fuel-Efficient Vehicle Policy. The reason there, there's a little bit of urgency here is the state has a deadline of September 30th to try to get this application in. If we can get it in by that deadline, if they approve everything as is, then we're looking for that check coming into town for $130,000.
Okay, I'm being stupid right now, Jack. Can you just reiterate for me what stretch code?
Yeah, stretch code is a fancy way of saying building code. There are a few different versions. There's the regular state building code. There's the slightly more strict building code that we voted in a couple of years ago at town meeting. And then there's a new and improved building code. Right now, that doesn't apply to us.
Okay.
Yep, so we've done that.
So which one are we trying, which one are we trying to do? Are you trying to change the one that we have already?
Nope. Note number five, the stretch code, that's set. No worries, all done. We have to work on number three and number four because we also have number one and number two done.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
No, thanks for the good work your committee's doing, Jack.
Thanks, appreciated. And again, we are one of two towns in Hampshire County. I think South Hadley hasn't officially gotten their green community status, and neither have we. All the other towns in Hampshire County have.
You know, we like to dilly-dally. That's it.
Well, that's all right. Now, now seems to be a good time to get this done. And I'll pass it over. Yep.
A lot of people want more answers and questions. I think we ask more than any other community about a lot of these things. So, you know, that's probably why we're at where we're at, you know?
Well, the time is right now, but the advantage of this, Joyce, is long-term. There are other grants that we can apply for that Sunderland and Amherst, Northampton, all the other towns around us have been able to qualify for that we haven't been able to even apply for because we're not part of the green community system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jack.
Thanks.
I made an emergency resolution. Marion, I know you're here.
Yes, hi, everybody. Hi, Jane. I'm hoping that by now, everybody has had a chance to look at the resolution, a declaration for, a climate emergency declaration. Again, I just wanted to say that it's, it's something that many, many towns in the state of Massachusetts and in the country have taken up as a way to say, you know, declaring a climate emergency and recognizing that this is, that we are in an emergency. And by declaring it, we are taking actions like the green community, like other actions, and recognizing that this is something that we have to face now and moving into the future, and that we're going to be making decisions and choices about how to support and protect our community and our citizens moving forward. So that's, that's what this is all about, and I hope that you've all had a chance to take a look at it.
Are there any questions from the Select Board?
I think, you know, given, given the impacts of this, it does seem that we would want to invite further discussion and comment.
So do we want to have an open forum of this thing?
I agree, yes.
Has there been any effect with the Agricultural Commission? Or has anybody talked to other farmers about the change in all of this climate thing and what it would mean to them down the road if this was to take place? Personally, I'm not in any, I'm not really favorable tonight to declare an emergency. I think that it's kind of jumping the gun at this point where a lot of our citizens have not been informed or updated. We have just seen the draft ourselves this week. I think it is too soon for us to declare any type of emergency at this point.
Well, we saw it two weeks ago, but we're talking about having a public forum.
Yeah.
So we'll try to set something up.
Yes.
My question is, has anybody contacted the Agricultural Commission on this?
Our commission is meeting on the 18th. It does not appear to be on their agenda, but I can, I've been in contact with Matt Fashis, so I can email him and ask him to add that to the agenda either, or maybe invite him to the public forum, or both.
Yes. Joyce, to answer your question, I have talked, I have talked to several farmers, and it's a split decision so far. So I am in favor of not voting on this tonight and discussing it further at a public forum or whatever venue we can make work.
Yeah, and I guess I'll go on record saying I'm not, I'm not opposed necessarily to us taking a position around the climate crisis, but I think the language that's in here is weighty enough that it definitely deserves a broader audience. I can also, you guys asked for a legal review of it. I can give you just response. This is our town council. He said, "From a legal standpoint, in his opinion, the resolution is not binding on the town to do anything. It is aspirational in nature only. As such, the town can let anyone in the world know how it feels as it sits there." So it is not binding. Yeah, I think that was important.
And when you actually look at what it's saying to do, it doesn't specifically give things. It says, "Pay attention."
Pay attention.
Right. So, and it's, but it acknowledges, the town acknowledges that there's a climate change, which we see because of the temperature changes, either drought or flood or molding tobacco in barns, or whatever it is. Things have changed from the past. And it has to do with climate. But having a forum is good. How soon do you think we can set that up?
A public forum?
Yeah.
Probably before the 12th of August.
Okay, lovely. We'll work on that, and we'll announce the forum date next week.
That's Jack. Good question. Jack, are you still there?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is there major urgency on this?
You know, I can hardly, I can hardly turn on the evening news without seeing fires in Yosemite or floods in Yellowstone. You know, it was 90 degrees today, you know, being outside. There's no doubt that there's urgency all around the planet for this. I think that we'd be wise to, we'd be wise to kind of get our aspirations up. Yep.
Let me cut you off. I need to rephrase the question. Is there urgency with your trying to get your five criteria met for this?
No, this, this does not link to the first thing that was mentioned today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we will continue. Board and Committee appointments. Thank you, Marion.
Welcome.
All right, we have fire department appointments on our agendas here.
Jane, can I speak to this?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the fire department appointments, she's thinking it was a strong sheet. So he's appointed them, but there are additional appointments on the second page of that that are appointments that y'all make that impact the fire department. They also exist on my 2022 appointment update sheet, but I wanted to be very careful to make sure y'all had the full picture, so I included his list as well. But y'all do appoint everybody on the 2022... But y'all do appoint everybody on the 2022 appointment update list. Who is highlighted in yellow are the people who are due to be reappointed. The people who are in orange are the vacancies are listed in orange, and if I did not hear from a committee, they are in red. Um, and then Chief uh Chief Mason's seniority list is there as well. Y'all do appoint the police department. And they are also listed on my list, but I wanted you to see the list from the chief.
Jennifer, I think we're emailing today on the ambulance committee. Yes, um, the chief does have an alternate on his list, just didn't make it onto yours.
Well, Sue, I would like to be consistent in what we're doing, and I do not have that gentleman's name. And none of the people on the 2022 appointment update list are new appointments. These are all reappointments. So I would like to hold on him until the 20th, and I'm going to bring y'all um well, the board of health, you're bringing to your spokes, but I'm bringing to y'all cultural council appointments, um, a client, two climate change appointments, and then this gentleman as well. And that way we'll have consistency on how we're appointing people and not doing any reappointments or any new appointments in your reappointments.
And maybe we can get him to spell his last name phonetically. I didn't answer that, maybe.
Yes, I will. Well, actually, if you have contact with him, if you could tap on that, I'd really appreciate it. Um, I would also, there there appears to be some confusion before y'all did the appointment. Um, and in COVID, things got a little odd. And it appears that some committees thought that as long as they invited someone to join their committee, that meant the person was on their committee. And so I just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that uh the the boards and committees that y'all appoint are literally the boards and committees y'all appoint. Nobody can add someone without the full weight of the select board appointment. So that's-
Question about that. Can somebody add a person to a committee midterm?
You can join, you can add or remove people at your at the select board's wheel.
Okay.
Um, so yes, people completely can join mid-term.
Have to be notified that this is happening.
Well, so y'all have asked for an appointment process. Carolyn's given me um a couple of examples. I found a couple of examples, so I'm actually working on a a beautiful new community interest form um for y'all, and I'll be presenting just that to y'all at the next meeting.
Right, it'll just keep that process streamlined so we know. Because we have members on committees that have not, who have not pointed, right?
And I didn't know it existed.
Yeah, they have to be sworn in to have any legitimacy.
I was just gonna ask that, because we have to go in front of town.
Yeah, alright, so Jennifer has produced a huge list here for us. They have a motion.
A moment, a motion to appoint all employees, board, committee members that are due for reappointment on the attached list.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Randy. Local vote, please.
We'll call the Nevinston?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Excuse me, Parsons?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Just to remind everybody that to just be appointed does need to be sworn in when our amazing town clerk just suspended.
Do they need to be sworn in every year or?
When they're reappointed, they need to be sworn in.
Everybody has to re-show up, okay? Alright, select board meeting, hybrid to in-person. Um, this is sort of touchy since the state hasn't told us where they're at.
Yeah, so there's there's a couple of issues. Is it okay if I just fill you in? So there's actually two issues with uh remote meetings. The, as you know, July 15th was the cutoff. They were not going to extend it, but the House and Senate have two different versions, and they, as of now, they have not, it has not agreed. And so uh that is hope it would be wonderful if there was a decision on Friday. Um, but it could not, so we just the boards and committees know um that as of Friday, if anything is posted or has a meeting for next week, it has to be in person. Unless we hear otherwise. The other thing that has come up is the House version of the hybrid extending it permanently, at least until April 23rd, if not past that, was to put a hybrid mandated meeting. Which is, as you can see, what we dealt with today, because it's an extreme uh burden on small towns. And uh it means every single board, every single committee has to be meeting this in a room that can do this. And then you have to have a technician to help this. I mean, to to rely, it's not fair to Jennifer to be relying on this technical stuff. This is really where you need to have somebody here who can do this. We don't have that. Most small towns don't. So collectively and separately, small town administrators in this area have sent letters to our representatives and our senators to let them know that the the impact that's going to be physically, there's no funding that goes with it, and we physically can't afford it. I think it may have been somewhat of a knee jerk reaction. They know we wanted to still have hybrid, but didn't realize the impact of mandating it. So that's that's another issue that's going on. I Representative Carey, I met with Representative Carey, I sent him a letter, and Senator Comerford, Representative Carey, we happened to be on a meeting with Scott and I with him and yesterday, and I was able, he's very responsive, and we bring it back to the body to say, hey, look, there's been a ton of pushback from small town administrators who don't have the time, technician or anything like that. So I wanted to let you know that. I will, I can send you a copy of that letter that I sent to both, uh to to the senator and representative. So it's really, I will let you know Friday afternoon what's going on and just keep you updated.
Our preference, I think, is to do hybrid if it's an option. Otherwise, we're meeting person next week.
Right, so so obviously, we're gonna have to decide to meet in person next week because-
Unless it's decided by Friday, then it's possible.
Right, but we have to decide tonight what we're going to do, right?
No, we have time to post on Monday.
Okay. So we just wait.
Yes, we have two held hearings scheduled. That is an in-person meeting.
It's two weeks from now?
On the 20th, the 20th is an in-person meeting. I had to publish-
Hold hearings or hold forums?
Hold hearings.
Oh, so we did publish, you're right, thank you.
We haven't posted, but I had to publish it in a newspaper.
Right, that's right.
And so it had to be in person.
Understood.
So on the 20th, it's whoever can be together is together. Hopefully, we have a forum.
So again, I'm on vacation next week, and I'm not going to be in town, so.
Amy, are you enjoying that next week?
I'm in town.
Yep, I I should be back in time. I can't disclose too much, but um my work's been a little bit crazy right now, but I should be able to physically be here.
I agree.
I will be here.
I will be here.
Just on your form? Yes, please.
I'll even have my computer. Won't that be a miracle?
You won't need it, but that's great.
Yeah.
I might watch. Maybe I'll watch you guys.
Oh, God, help me.
Alright, we have some fiscal year end transfers.
Jen, can you, can you get that from board docs? Can you put Lori's documents up there?
I can, I think.
So Linda's on also, so I'll start giving you the overview, but um she can jump in at any point. And um so as soon as we get that up, I know you guys will be soon. But I share- So just as as that's happening, I'll explain so that um this is end of year transfers. Every year to do this, these are when individual line items um have gone over budget and we, the accountant looks at other individual line items that have excess at the end of the year, you have to to uh you have to vote to approve those transfers. So it is, it will be coming up. Um, so what you're gonna see at the bottom, oops. That's a line. Like that, but you can see it, oh, you guys are on, hold on.
That can probably come, there you go.
So if you can scroll, can you scroll from your computer, just so we can see that bottom line? So I just don't want you to get freaked out at the bottom line. You're gonna see 100,000. We are not overspent 100,000. This is within the total budget of FY22. Um, that certain line items um are, we have enough money to bring those to the items that were overspent. And they could be overspent for a lot of different reasons. This list here, when Linda and I uh talked to the accountant today, very, she's seen it in most of the communities she's working in, whether it's healthcare, whether it's um fuel, all of these areas, advertising for CBA, all of those uh numbers have gone up significantly. So that's where the shortages are coming from. Uh, so that bottom number that you see, again, that is not, we have not over budget. The bottom line of our general budget is not over that. Um, in fact, we have a significant, probably several hundred thousand dollars, Linda, coming back in returns from um departments, so.
Right, yeah, we don't know the full amount of endorsements, I I mean of encumbrances yet, but um it it looks like it's, it is, yeah, several hundred thousand. We're maybe 500,000 in uh rollbacks, so.
The finance committee look at this, yeah?
They're gonna be looking at it tomorrow. So, yeah, this was last minute, and I apologize. That was um I did not hit that up on time, and the finance committee has been very gracious to meet tomorrow for a quick meeting to approve it.
Okay.
Susan, that's our hand raised.
Alright. Susan? Your main name?
Trying to get there. Uh one thing that I know, Carolyn, that's not on here is um the transfer between um the police and fire accident that came in so much higher last year. Uh, and we were taking that out of the regular property and casualty. And I did send uh Lori an email about that, so I I'm just concerned that she doesn't-
Is that, is that going to reimburse, not reimburse?
Look, look at item five, the fifth line, Susan?
Yeah, 9,181.
Okay, but
It's being funded out of unemployment. Uh, she she puts, she puts the funding uh source first. I I was, I my first half of my conversation, I was confused with her today. She she uh puts the funding source first, so the department that's in need during the county, that's in need is on the right-hand column. So that's the money.
Yeah, because I had indicated to her that the property and casualty, we had money in that to cover the police and fire accident since it was an insurance to an insurance. So that's-
It's okay, she, yeah, she's chosen the-
It was included in the total.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm glad to know we had 9,181 dollars in the unemployment line to cover it. That's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I I think that all of this, as Carolyn says, these are, these are shifts in the budget that we do at the end of the year. This is not really, um, these aren't uh, you know, given that this is a 20 million dollar budget, we have 100,000 that we want to switch around at the end of the year. That's that's pretty good. That's really not a high percentage, and it's very low percentage. And um some of them aren't even um aren't even budget short falls because, I mean, you look at the conservation, it's right within the conservation budget. A few of them are like that. It's because we in Hadley, we vote the salary and the expense items separately. So we might have an excess as a conservation. We had an excess in um in the, in the expense, and we needed to move it over to the salary item, and those kinds of things happen. Um, yeah, the debt and interest, uh, we usually, usually at some point during the year, um, I'll I'll shift an amount between interest and principal, and that just didn't get done at the town meetings this year, so that's just um exactly what we needed in 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 the principal line was exactly um uh what we had left over in interest because we, I I plan on a total between those two. So there's really, um, we went through this today. There's really no problem areas. Some of it was just a matter of of estimating, estimating um fuel at the beginning of the year is always difficult, um, things like that.
I have a question, I have a question for you, Linda. Um, I keep, I keep getting muted. What are all the health insurances? And that money has been transferred to these other, um, where did all the health insurance money come from?
Okay, so the health insurance, that's another one that is very difficult to estimate by March of the year before, how much we're going to be spending on health insurance for um the employees that come and go in the following, in the, in the coming year. Uh, people leave, people come, people grow their families, uh, all kinds of things happen. So that generally tends to be um, if we're lucky, I've seen it only once where it was underestimated and not overestimated. So that does tend to be uh an area that we um, you know, it's, it's been called pretty well. Let me look at um the health insurance budget for the year. Uh, what was allocated was 1,320,000. So to be off by 54,000 at the end of the year, it's uh, it was called pretty closely, I think Joan did a great job estimating that one. So that, what what happens then, because we do have some extra in that, because we want to make sure that that's not a a low-balled line item, there tends to be leftover, so it does tend to be the one that we use as a funding source for the the shortfalls, uh, well, for the budgets that need something.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to the FY22 end of year transfers is recommended by the accountant on the attached form.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Randy. Local vote, please.
Local, uh, Nevinston?
Yes.
Changeloo? You muted again, Joyce.
But you keep muting me, so yeah.
I promise I'm not. Parsons?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
And Keegan, yes, thank you. I really am not Joyce.
Leave me alone, leave me alone.
The next report.
Angry, hungry.
Oh, they're all that you just said, I'm sorry, that's just the, those are- Yeah, those are just the county administrator's report.
Okay, I just want to give you some updates. Um, we have, we've gotten a lot of procurement projects in, completed and um in the going, you know, ongoing. Uh, we still have some that need to get started, but uh we need a lot of information for some of the departments that we're working with to do. Some, uh, the streetlight purchase, just for the newer board members, we have been in the process for about over a year. Um, former select board member David Phil was uh working with me to um help, help us move forward, and we're actually working with three entities, and since that, since uh David has left, we have a, Susan has been helping me, so thank you very much, Susan. Uh, it's a very convoluted process. We are at the point where our GIS audit has been completed. Um, and we are now ready to do this purchase and sales agreement, but I still, I still have some final steps that need to be made uh with real term at Eversource, and I'll be coming to you um probably next week with that purchase and sales agreement. And we'll um provide information, but this has, we will have a significant savings in that expense line, significant.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, that was great. Uh, the other thing is two important dates for you is the state primary is Tuesday, September 6th. State elections, Tuesday, November 8th. Our clerk, Jessica, wanted to let you know about that. Uh, we talked a lot about the hybrid days, so I'm not going to touch on that. I did want to talk to you about, and Scott is still on, is that correct?
I believe so.
Um, I, we just wanted to give you an update and um and again, just to remind you, such a good relationship with our representative and our legislators. Uh, chapter 90 has a new, it's like a new testing compacting requirement for newly paved roads that are funded by chapter 90. Uh, so the state is doing this testing now that actually has a negative impact for a small town. Not very thick pavement. Um, Scott, I will not do it justice, so I'm gonna ask you to summarize for them. Um, but there's no, nothing to really discuss. We wanted to let you know about it, and what Scott and I did yesterday is we got on a Zoom call with Representative Carey to let him know, hey, help us out, these small towns, and Scott will also tell you how many other small towns it's being impacted on, but I want you guys aware of it. So Scott, can you do justice to this?
Sure, uh, good evening, everyone, again. Uh, so a couple of weeks ago, when we paved Hockenham Road, uh, I was going down there to check how things were going, and I noticed in our brand-new pavement, there was a hole drilled in it. And I'm like, what the heck is is that? If this is brand-new asphalt, it shouldn't have a hole in it at the, right now. So I went and talked to the paving foreman and got an explanation of of what was going on. So uh, Mass D O T ran a pilot study. Uh, and they just implemented it, that they want a Proctor test done on compaction, which, which, in order for them to do that, they take a a core of the asphalt and do some scientific stuff to it to get the dry weight and moisture content, et cetera, for them to be able to test the compaction rate of that asphalt. for them to be able to test the compaction rate of that asphalt. So in doing that, they need to drill a hole in our, at, brand-new asphalt road. And so I called, you know, Mass D O T immediately to find out, you know, about this new spec and things, because I was unaware of it. Uh, in doing so, you, you know, they explained to me what was going on and whatever, and we just had to go with it at the time. Uh, I talked to the, uh, paving contractor, the quality control, and, uh, all the people involved. And it's just a new standard that the state's kind of throwing down, uh, to everyone. And it really doesn't come into, it's kind of a waste for a small town to, or anyone really, to have to abide by these standards. These are, you know, standard mass highway, uh, you know, bridge, bridge and road construction, uh, interstate specs that they're trying to make us meet. And first of all, our roads were never designed to, uh, really take the traffic and stuff that are on on the begin with. So in doing that, really, it's, it's just a lot of, the, the little bit of money we have, we're trying to stretch as far as we go, we can. So like on Hockenham, we, we milled off an inch and a half of road, we put an inch and a half back. They, they roll that with a, a fifteen-ton roller. Uh, and anyone in the construction industry will tell you that when that is rolled, uh, three times, that that is compacted to, uh, any kind of specification, it, it, you, you can't get it any more compacted. Uh, so when you're running this big compactors and stuff, uh, if it's not being compacted enough, they put a vibration on also, and really, you know, make things shake. And in our town and surrounding towns everywhere, our infrastructure is very old. And it does not like vibration from com- compactors, which I, I've seen it happen. Water pipes and things can break instantly from that. It, it just can't take it. Uh, so really, they're, they're making us do something that is totally uncalled for, and, and we can't, we can't meet that spec anyways. We're, we're not doing full-depth reconstruction. We're not, uh, taking the gravel out, putting brand-new gravel in, and rebuilding our roads from, from scratch. We are stretching the money we have to, to make our roads nice and smooth for as long as we possibly can, like twenty years or whatever. We're, we're not building interstates. We, we don't have the funding for that, and I, I think it's just a waste of, uh, our chapter ninety money, because ob- obviously, it's done by a third party and it, and it's in our, our bid. But remotely, we are paying for that, or, or the, the townspeople are, are paying for that service that is somewhat unneeded.
Thank you, Scott. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're, we're advocating have the relationship with Joe and Dan, and we will have a future meeting with Joe as well, so.
So does this potentially negatively impact the amount of money we would get for chapter ninety?
No, it's just in the future, you're automatically damaging the, um,
I was gonna say, is that not gonna be?
It's automatic, and they're just, they're, they're filling it with, with, you know, tar and just stamping on it. So it's gonna, that's gonna be your first pop. Really perfect, brand new, so. Thank you, Scott.
They doesn't let you dig on new roads.
Yeah, well, they can. Um, and I know you guys are, you're anxious to be done with the meeting.
We're right on time. Jennifer's done a great job of timing this one.
Just some other things. Uh, tomorrow, a ten a.m. library has invited the public to help honor, um, happy heroes, and it invited the fire department, police department, Department of Department, and their trucks for the public to come and help honor them. Um, I know the library, I mean, I'm sorry, Senior Center has a new, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my notes with me, Jane. There's a new, new administrative assistant, Leslie Owen. And Friday and Friday.
From two to four, there's a drop-in reception. So anybody who hasn't come in either.
And then finally, just another reminder about Saturday, July twenty-third, for the Massachusetts Selectful Association's opening that training. So, that's it. Anything else?
I need a refresher.
Are you gonna go to the class?
I don't think so. I probably think I should, but I'm not. Anyway.
Anything else? Joyce, do you have anything to announce?
I have a couple that I can think of off my hand is, uh, Donald Sullivan, uh, longtime resident of Hadley. Uh, owned many businesses, and the last of being Sully's, uh, breakfast and lunch place on Route nine. Uh, he also had a daughter that lives in town, Judy Dionne, a son in, uh, East Hampton. But the Dionne, um, boys that run, uh, the Dionne flooring and things are his grandsons. So condolences to his family on his passing. And then we also have Walter Weinzick, uh, a long time resident of Hadley. Certainly, uh, he was a teacher prior to going into business with his father for the Route nine. Uh, Weinzick Produce on, on Route nine. Over forty years, he's been there, so condolences to Janet and their family on his passing also.
Any other announcements?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Molly.
Second.
Second by Randy.
Roll call, sorry. Roll call to Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chunderla?
Yes.
Uh, Parsons?
Yes.
Isner?
Yes.
And Keegan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Everybody.